I got this was you up on the screen that just said it. I told it when we're having a literacy lesson and he's very interested in that, so. He's a lawyer in Pendleton.
Nothing out there.
Another one.
He started out here in the rare program.
Yeah.
Greater Ban.
Yeah, uh huh.
That's cool.
Yeah. Right out of law school.
Yeah, but he goes to Pendleton.
He was in Roseburg. Was in Bandit, I mean in Kusay. But the guy he worked with in Kusay became the director of Oregon Law Center in Pendleton. So that's. You know, I hated moving that far away.
Like so far. I can't remember where I'm at.
Hi, Mom.
Oh. Hey, Mark. Did you hear us talking about you?
My ears were burning.
I was telling your whole life story of starting in Banden and recruiting us here. Your parents.
Well, it's a good place to be.
And get your parents to live up here and then he ditches you.
He would love to be back here, wouldn't you, Mark?
Oh, yeah, I think about how I'm gonna get back there every day. You just gotta find a spouse, you know, the dating pool out there is like a puddle.
Yeah, the lack of young people was tough. The coast.
Always the last two minutes, right? It's like. Super quiet, super tense. Make sure your microphones are on, please.
Okay, we're close enough.
Okay.
I'll start this session of the Banden Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Orsi.
Here.
Vice Chair Jakowski.
Here.
Chair Starbuck.
Here.
Commissioner Norman.
Here.
Commissioner Pressler.
Here.
Commissioner Frey.
Here.
Thank you.
Moving on, public comment. This is a time for any public comment not on the agenda, limited to five minutes each. To comment in person, please sign in and return. And return form to Dick Clerk. If participating via Zoom, raise your hand at the beginning of the public comment period. Public comments and information provided during the meeting will be collected and retained by the city as a public record in accordance with Oregon revised statutes, Public Records Policy 192.005 to 192.170 and 357.805 to 357.895, with some exceptions. Is there any public comment? All right. Moving on. We don't have. We don't have any public hearing. Oh, that's right, consent agenda. Sorry about that. Approval of this consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Public comment has been wrestled with. And we do, we do not have a public hearing. New and used business, Department of Land Conservation and Development presentation. Planning Commissioner Training. Carry on.
Very quickly, pleasure to meet you all. My name is Jeff Mitchum, Community Development Director, first meeting, happy to be here. And it's my honor and pleasure to introduce to you Hue Rodomski. What'd I do? Good? She's my caretaker for DLCD. She's gonna be looking over my shoulder in the forthcoming months, if not years.
Handler.
Handler, sorry, handler. We like the word handler. She's gonna help us out with a little bit of Planning Commissioner Training 101. I thought it might be a good opportunity to kick off a new director here and refresh us all with perhaps something that might be of knowledge, but hopefully a refresher is appreciated. So with that, Hue, take it away.
Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hue Rodomski and I'm very excited to be here today. I'm also very excited to be here today because I've been with the department for six years now. And this is my first time here in Banden in person, in front of you, and providing this information. So I'm very excited to have been able to tag along Jeff's new tenure to provide the training for you. So I'm just gonna put this down real quick and pass my business card out real quick. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So before I start my presentation, I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I am by education a biologist, an environmental scientist. First job at college was on commercial fishing boats in Alaska and Hawaii. Been doing fishery observing to get data for NOAA so we can manage your fisheries better. And I've been going out to sea for a couple of years. Want to jump on land because you can't get a spouse out of sea. So, so then kind of to myself and figure out, you know, what it is that I want to do. Also didn't want to abandon my ocean experience. And so I kind of took back to get a graduate degree in environmental science. And coastal land use was what I realized that that's what, where I would have a passion for. Part of it is the ocean connection because if we can do our land use better in coastal areas, then everything downstream, including ocean health, will be also better. And coastal areas around the globe are typically where large cities are cited. Now, on the Oregon coast, we're all small cities, which is also good. But just to say that coastal land use is very important. And so that's my passion and that's where my motivation is. And I did not go to planning school. And so my planning experience comes from having worked with Lincoln County as a planner for about five years before I came on board with DLCD six years ago. So with Lincoln County, you're gonna figure, you know, it's a coastal county. And if you do planning and coastal land use, and so that's kind of where I got my foot in the door, so to speak, for land use in Oregon. And also before I go to my next slide, I also like to learn more about you. If you wouldn't mind, let me know what's your motivation to serve on the Planning Commission? And maybe how long you've been on the commission?
How long I have a hard time remembering. Probably three, three years or about that. I think I, I care about the environment. I care about how we use our land. Before I, before I was doing this, I was doing hike leadership and hike training along the coast. So it seemed like kind of a natural thing when I heard there was an opening. And I actually have been through one of your trainings over in Kokil.
Oh, okay. Oh, perfect. Thank you. I thought you looked familiar.
I think I've seen you some, I almost think I've seen you in this room before, but have you been here for meetings?
I've been in this room before, but not in, not, not doing exactly this.
Okay, must have been some other meeting.
Probably some other meeting, yeah. Nice to see you again. Thank you.
Hi, Sally Jakowski. I've been on Planning Commission since 2018. I actually had a house built. So I thought it was a good idea for me to possibly be able to, to help the community by some insight that I had going through that process. And I like fair and equitable. Follow, follow the ordinances kind of deal, so.
Don Starbuck, I've been on the Planning Commission forever. I was mayor in a small town, not in Oregon, but in Colorado. So I've had past experience in doing some of that. And I got shanghaied into this seat, so there you go.
I'm Jan Pressler. I've been on the Planning Commission about a year. And I think similar to Sally, I was just interested in the ordinances in the town and their enforcement.
Hi, my name is Bill Frey. I've been in Banden now for six years and on the Planning Commission, or I think going on three years. And my main reason for joining the commission is to attempt to ensure that what happens as a city is really what the city should have happened.
Commissioner Norman.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So I've been on the commission for, I don't know, four to five years. And I, I was attracted to this position because it's significantly different from, from what I was used to focusing on when I was actually working. I'm retired now. I've been vacationing in Banden for probably 20 plus years and finally bought a home here in 2018. And I'm interested, obviously, well, not obviously, but I'm interested in the environment. And I know that as a tourist town, Banden, there are all kinds of things that, that I think require protections of the environment here in Banden. I also think that it's important to, to do whatever I can to ensure that the Banden citizenry has a voice in terms of what's, what's approved and not approved here in the city of Banden, specific to planning and housing.
Thank you. Do I? Okay, okay. You mean, okay.
Well, thank you also for sharing that. It's always, I always like to learn, you know, to understand more of the commission. And I think the one you were at, Tom, I, there were some technical difficulties and we started late and I forgot to do that in the beginning and I don't know. So I'm glad to finally have heard that.
I remember the training part, but not the bad part.
Okay, great, okay, okay, okay. Okay, so the outline for today is, so first, there's a really brief history of Oregon land use system. And then second is how system is set up. And then third, the third one is a types of lands decisions. So which things are the ones you make, which are the ones that the council has to make? And, and the ones in between. Number four is just how to hold a fair impartial tribunal, which is central to our land use program. Next, please. Okay, so as I said in the beginning, my introduction of myself, that I didn't go planning school. And so I always like to just have this slide and kind of get everyone a sense of what you think land use planning is. So I mentioned I didn't go planning school because I don't, I don't have a textbook definition of what land use planning is. So I guess if you could also share your thoughts on what you think is planning is. We don't, you don't have to all say something. You can, if you just want to say something, you could, you know, please share. Jan, do you have an idea of what land use planning is?
I just think it's to protect the use of land so that we don't have, you know, all multifamily, you know, throughout the whole town. I mean, you have to have a diverse use of land to accommodate all the different things that a community needs. That's basically how I see it.
Yep, yeah, definitely. Our future, what's your idea of land use planning since you've been on commission for forever? A paragraph, maybe.
Go on to somebody else.
All right, Mr. Orsi.
Well, I'd say it's similar to what Jan said. I mean, your illustration here is very good. It's looking at every part and making sure that you have the right mixture and not have any part dominate any other part or any, any use dominate every other use.
Yeah.
Oregon, though, did want to protect agriculture. I mean, that was one of the things originally when they set up like a land use board. I'm pretty sure that there was a, a very big emphasis on protecting agriculture.
That is true, yes. And I will go over that a little bit in my history piece, yes, that's very true. So I have this picture here because say if you are, say this is your property and you're the homesteader and you want to have, oh, different land uses, right? So you want to put compatible uses next to each other and not conflict with one another. So for example, you want your animals to be further away from the house so that you're not smelling, say, you know, the pigs and we're trying to have, you know, some rest in the evening, have your window open or whatever. So you have your crops nearby and then maybe rotate your, your, your hay field so that your soil also doesn't just, you know, get suck of nutrients and can't grow anymore. So, so when you're a homesteader, so say a single operator on a property, it's very easy to make decisions on land uses and where you want what land use to be, which space. But as a community is much harder, of course, because multiple ownerships, various interests, backgrounds, and what one neighbor does affects the other neighbor. So, so it's, so your jobs are very important to the community to try to make sure that compatible uses and characteristic of the community, you know, all that kind of things are envision the community who you want to be, you know, it's all well thought out and, and implemented. And so central to Oregon's news planning program is process, is the decision process. And because we have to make decisions as a community. And so that's why the fair impartial tribunal is, is a critical part. And opportunities for folks to be heard is also a critical part of things program. Just because if you're, if we all agree that a process for decision making was fair, then we can all accept the decision that was made. And so it doesn't matter what our backgrounds are, our interests, our knowledge base, all that. If we can all agree on the process, then, you know, we can move forward. Next, please. Okay, so this, just, just a few why we do land use planning. And I didn't take this out of, it's just kind of off the top of my head. I didn't, you know, getting, no textbook definitions here. And so it's environmental protection, which some of you have said that you're interested, interested in. Avoidance of urban sprawl, promotion of compatible uses. And the fourth one, increased certainty for developers and buyers. That one I usually like to emphasize on because, you know, we think about conservation a lot. Some people like to say, oh, you just call your Department of, Department of Land Conservation and forget the rest. What's, what's the rest? Do you know, do you know what the rest is? It's end development. So because people, you know, like to say, oh, you just wanted to tell us, right, planners, you want to tell you note everything and, and you can develop here and there. So, but having zoning and having these policies, it protects the property owner. Because if you buy property, say in a neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood, and there are no industrial or commercial zones near you, you can, you, you know that your investment in that property is certain because there won't be a junkyard, say, next to you in 10 years or even 20 years. And you will have input if somehow they do want to change zoning. If somehow, you know, development goes on, then characteristics changes in the community, that kind of thing. So, so I had to point that out because it's not just good for the community as a whole, but it's also good for the property owners themselves. Next, please. So here is just a Google image of, of Banden and the surrounding county jurisdiction. I believe the dotted line is city limits. Right, yeah, I think your urban growth boundary, your UGB is different than that. Right, because the donut hole would be inside the UGB. But right now, this line is showing that it's not inside this, this boundary here. So, right, that is city limits. Okay, so, so, yeah, so this will be the geography essentially that you will be making decisions for within that polygon of the red dash lines. I guess I will say one more thing about the urban growth boundary. You all know what donut hole is, right? I mean, I learned that from you guys. Is that, that's, so is that sound?
People online, I don't know everyone online. They, I don't.
No, I interject a minute. Actually, it's a donut hole because it's closed in, enclosed. The city limits actually goes down 101 to Seabird.
Okay, you mean this line here on the map?
Not dotted on the.
It's not dotted on the highway. Yeah.
Highway is there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so, so donut hole, right, so it's inside your urban growth boundary for city of Banden. Currently it's in county jurisdiction. So even though that's county, at some point, some action probably come before you to figure out what to do with the donut hole, probably when this say annexed in or maybe some agreements be changed. But I guess I just want to say that not only inside city limits, but also inside urban growth boundaries, you may also have decision making opportunities on. Okay, so here is Governor Tom McCall. And he was the governor that signed into legislation or into law, sent a bill 100, which is the bill that authorized our current land use program in Oregon in 1973. And I have a little clip of him, about a minute and a half of him. It's a, it's from the speech when he adopted or signed into law the Senate Bill 100. So I just wanna, could you try clicking please to see if it will.
Oregon is an inspiration. Whether you come to it or are born to it, you become entranced by our state's beauty, the opportunity she affords, and the independent spirit of her citizens. Oregon is an inspiration even to those who do not choose to come here to live. The story of the Willamette River, our ecological Easter, has evoked cries of hurrah all across the nation and in distant parts of the world. And we have heard, along with the applause for Oregon, lamentations for other states where progress has fallen prey to expediency. Oregon's story is an inspiration to all Americans who believe they should be able to influence their government and their lawmaking process. The most intensive special interest pressure ever brought to bear on this legislature was by the lobbyists who came from afar to declare that the bottle bill will not pass. But it did pass because you and your constituents were inspired by a love for the tradition and the beauty of our home. You and I shouldn't claim we love Oregon more than anyone else, but that we love Oregon as much as anyone. Our thoughts today and our deliberations to come must spring from our determination to keep Oregon lovable and to make it even more livable. But there is a shameless threat in our environment and in the whole quality of our life, and that is the unfettered despoiling of our land. Sagebrush subdivisions, coastal condominiumia, and the ravenous rampage of suburbia here in the Willamette Valley all threaten to mark Oregon's status as the environmental model of this nation. We're dismayed that we have not stopped misuse of the land, which is our most valuable finite natural resource. Umbridge at blatant disrespect for sound planning is not taken just here in Salem because less than a month ago, for example, Jefferson's County Commissioners appealed to me for a moratorium on subdivisions in that county because the speculators, the speculators had outrun local capacity for rational control. We're in dire need of state land use policy, dire need of new subdivision law and new standards for planning and zoning by the counties and cities of our state. The interests of Oregon for today and in the future must be protected from grasping wastrels of the land. We must respect another truism, that unlimited and unregulated growth leads inexorably to a lowered quality of life. Oregon is an inspiration.
Thank you. Good, so, yeah, so that, that was 52 years ago now when that was signed into legislation or, sorry, am I saying it right? Were legislation laws, the same thing? Okay, okay, thank you. So, so, so before 1973, Oregon did have some state laws on land use. So 1919, cities could zone private land. 1947, counties could also zone private land. And then in 1963, the state want to protect farmlands as well and establish the, what's known as the EFU exclusive farm use. So, which is our most protected land use zone in a state. Okay, so more, a little bit more on Senate Bill 100. So, so there's another quote from Governor McCall. We're talking about more than preserving the beautiful Oregon. We're talking about economy and the environment. We're talking about balance. In short, we're talking about people and the land. And people and land is really central to my department's work. We always make sure that voices are heard, decisions are fair, that process are followed. So this is part of my history part now, that's why it's more and more of these photos of historic figures. So, so Senator, I think it was Senator Hector McPherson, he was, I believe, a hog farmer in Albany. And he was seeing the subdivisions going up in the farmlands around him. And he was afraid to see more farmers getting lost by turning into subdivisions. When farmlands are usually the easiest to build on because they're flat. So you don't, so forest lands require less protection just by nature of topography. So farmlands need to be protected, otherwise we're gonna lose a lot of our farmlands. And when they were drafting the land use bill, they also realized that they needed more support for it. So they enlisted L.B. Day, who was a labor leader and legislator. And so L.B. Day very soon quickly saw that by protecting farmlands and forest lands, you are not only protecting economy base of our state, we're a natural resource based state, but also all the jobs that comes with those activities. So for farming, it's not just farmers that have employment through farming, but the foreign equipment makers, people who maintain foreign equipment, people who harvest, who transport, who process, put on their shelves. So this whole slew of economic activities come from one acre of land versus say if a different subdivision, then you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have any jobs. But, so that's one main reason why the news program was started by protecting natural resources that our state economy is based on and on all the jobs that that comes from that, too. And I forget which, who came first, was Governor, Governor Vigatia or Bob Stroop came? I don't know who came first, but they were, I guess, on both sides of the aisle, on opposite sides, and they were all. they were uh, I guess, um on both sides of the aisle, on opposite sides, and and they were all supportive um of of the bill. So this is just to illustrate that it was a group effort. And uh people saw the value of things program and and wanted to make sure that happened. Okay, so Senate One Hundred, so it created um L C D C, which is the Land Conservation Development Commission. So it's our volunteer commission, seven members, and they come from different regions of the state. Um, and that's, they are policymakers. Um, and then staff, um the L C D, Department of Land Conservation Development, um it's two L C D C. These acronyms are also kind of, you know, L C D C, D L C D. And then I think in the very beginning, um I think the L C D wasn't even um used very much when um, so in the seventies when um staff was taking, say, reams of paper in a jeep across the state to have public hearings. Um, they were just known as the L C D C. Um, so, so folks back in the day may just say L C D C, but sometimes they just mean staff to the L C D C, so the L C D. Okay, so um, so the bill also charged L C D C with adopting statewide planning goals. Next slide, please. Um, so this is our current membership of the commission. Um, our coast one right now is Leanne Thompson. She's a county commissioner in Clasbit County. Um, Melissa Cribbins, when she was uh county commissioner at Coos County, she was on the commission on L C D C. Um, but she had resigned to to run for office. Um, so um, otherwise, um, she could have still be on there. Um, cuz she, cuz I I believe everyone can serve two four-year terms. Um, next please. Okay, so these, the statewide planning goals that L C D C adopted um as charged by Senate Bill One Hundred. And you'll notice that these are, it's in New Mexico, but not entirely. I've boxed them according to categories. So the ones not in boxes, so go one and two are what we call our process goals. So how do we carry out program, our goal one and goal two have instructions for those. Uh, the one in the green box, we call our conservation goals. Orange box, development goals, and the blue box, um we call coastal goals. And coastal goals actually were drafted by O C C and D C as the Oregon Coast Conservation Development Commission, who eventually got absorbed into L C D C. Um, they did that anticipation for um um the newly, back then nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three, the newly authorized um Coastal Zone Management Act, um a federal, the federal act, which established a federal-state partnership for um states to come up with coastal management programs and volunteer. Um, and then if the federal agency, which is NOAA, the National Oceanic, Atmospheric, Atmospheric Administration, if they approve your coastal program in your state or territory, um then the state or territory um gets funding to run the program and also something we call a federal consistency authority, which will, I will go into here, but I just wanna point out that's why the coastal goals are drafted separately from the rest of them because it was um impetus from the C Z M A, the Coastal Zone Management Act. Um, so um, the pillars of our program, um it's go three, go four, so go three agricultural lands, go four forest lands, and again, to protect the natural resource-based economy that we have in our state. And um the third, um leg of the stool, if you will, um is go fourteen urbanization. And to a certain extent, go eleven, because go the fourteen, go eleven, they act together to contain development. So go three and go four blanket protects any land in the county. It's all, so when counties had a first start drafting, um their comprehensive plans to meet state goal, um these statewide planning goals, um all the land were a default farm or forest. If you wanna bring land in a county to be residential, which you you would, because there's already residential areas in your county, um you need to take what we call an exception to the goal, so exception to go th- go three and go four. So sometimes we call those exception lands, and you may come across that term once in a while. But so exception lands just mean lands in the county that's not farm or forest. Because they all started out as farm forests, and then to designate differently, you need to have an exception from go three and go four. So it's kind of like variance sort of, sort of thing, but not, not exactly. Anyways, so um, so go fourteen then, uh urbanization um establishes establishes the urban growth boundary around the cities. And um, which means you can't, and then go eleven um builds on that by saying that you cannot extend sewer outside of a U G B. So um, if you, so just by doing that or setting that policy, uh, as a state, we're limiting the density of development in the county jurisdiction. Um, because if you are on septic, right now you need minimum of two acres per dwelling. You need to have um an initial area for your subject field and then a repair area in case your initial fails. So you need all that space for one dwelling. So one acre is about forty-six, forty, forty-five, forty-six thousand square feet. So two acres, ninety thousand square feet. And but in a city, you could have as little as, say, three thousand square feet per lot for a dwelling. So ninety thousand square feet for one dwelling in the county, three thousand in a city. So just by limiting where sewer can go, you're drastically limiting how dense residential development can be in the county jurisdiction. Um, okay, so more about how a system is set up. So the state's responsibilities are to set this policy, so that's our commission, L C D C. Uh, we acknowledge, acknowledge city and county plans, and what that just means is that they approve. They've reviewed and they've, they're approving your plan, but um I guess they won't use the work knowledge cuz they wanna say approve, I don't know. Um, so, but that's what it means. Um, and um we enforce goals, um so that they, they, sorry, the statewide land use planning goals. Um, but depends on, you know, what, there's, there's like a threshold they need to reach for us to really take action. And when we take action, we are participating just like any, anyone would, which means we go to a hearing, we submit our comment to um the, to the record um of the, in the hearing, so we maintain our status of appeal if we needed to. So we don't have a separate enforcement. Uh, I guess we might, but um from, from my regional representative um lens, that's the bulk of what we would do if we were to enforce um a goal. Uh, there's probably other legal instruments that our attorney knows that, I don't know, that we could, I don't know, but do you, do you know it? So, so my understanding is that we participate just like anybody else, um even though we are the uh department that sets the the rules, I guess. Uh, so we review amendments, so anytime you change your, your comprehensive plan, your um land use ordinances or your land use maps, it all has to go through our review and make sure for consistency with the current state rules. Um, and I'll just point out the last one, last highlight, uh that we provide technical assistance to adjacent counties. So for you folks, it'll be me as a, as your, your rep. Um, south coast for D L C D is um cities of Walport and Yaha's in Lincoln County, so two bubbles in Lincoln County. And then coastal land county, coastal Douglas County, and then Coos and Curry. And the coastal land, coastal Douglas, um is because we're also, so we are participating in that C Z M A, the Coastal Zone Management Act that I had talked about earlier. So Oregon Coastal Management Program, if you look at my card, it also says Oregon Coastal Management Program um under D L C D's name. Um, so that's why I only do coastal land, coastal Douglas. And that reminds me of a trivia question I want to ask you. Could you go back one, please? Okay, alright. So the trivia question is, um every city and county in the state have to adopt a comprehensive plan that um addresses all the applicable statewide planning goal in their jurisdiction. So for example, um Banden has beaches and dunes, therefore that your comp plan needs to have an element that addresses goal eighteen, beaches and dunes. So there's only one local jurisdiction in the state that has to have a comprehensive plan that addresses all the statewide planning goals. And can you, can you deduce which one it is? So, so the hint is go fifteen Willamette River Greenway. It's also welcome to participate. Yes, it is, yes, it's Lane County. Lane County, yes, yeah, so Lane County has to have go fifteen Willamette River Greenway and also have the coast. Um, and um I guess Douglas County doesn't have Willamette River Greenway, so, so it's Lane County that has to have every single one. Except to, for go nineteen, actually, cuz go nineteen is um ocean resources is for the territorial sea, uh which is the state jurisdiction. So um one of my coworkers, he's the steward of that, of that goal, go nineteen, Andy Lanier. Okay, so here um is the local part of the system. And the two icons here is um local government does the heavy lifting of the statewide planning program. And it's also where, because it's where the rubber meets the road, so decisions are made locally. So again, your jobs are very important, and thank you so much for being on the planning commission. Uh, some small cities have a hard time fill seats on their commission, and that can make things very hard. So just wanna keep on thanking you for serving on the planning commission. So same counties, they have adopt plans and codes in compliance with the right planning goals, as we've been talking about. Um, that have addressed, uh, uh, and they will address local vision and needs. Again, make land use some decisions locally, either it's a staff decision or it's a plan commission decision. Uh, and but legislative, if you're changing your code, then it's a city council decision. And um, you know, if you work as a planner for a day or a week, you need a phone calls from tons of people asking what can they do for a lot of land. And um hopefully, when they call you, they've have not bought the land yet, cuz when people buy land first and then ask, then yeah, right, they, it's, that's, they should ask first. So they don't get disappointed. And then, oh no, my life savings, like, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so here is a kind of flow chart of everything that goes into a local decision. So um staff planners, um Mr. Mitchum here has a very tough job as well because he's gotta make sure all these rules and codes and ordinances and whatever they wanna call those legal things uh have to go into um a local decision. And so um he has to make sure that he's not missed any when he's making a decision. Um, so again, that's why local governments are doing the heavy lifting of of our news program. Uh, little brain break, um any questions so far, anything you want me to elaborate on? Okay, we're still following, not reading any news on the phone. Okay. All right. What are your responsibilities as a planning commissioner? It's a question for planning commissioners. Anyone?
Make decisions.
Thank you. Yes, central to, yes, that's central. Good one.
Show up.
Yes, that's also a really good one. You are on the call, please show up, yes.
Make recommendations.
Yes, make recommendations, yes. And are the ideas of what your jobs are?
I cheated and went a slide ahead. But there's a lot of understanding there.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, so yeah, so this is a, a not, not exhaustive list, um but this is from page fifteen of the Oregon Planning Commissioner Handbook, which um I think you all should have a copy or have a link to it. Is that right, um Jeff?
They will now.
Okay.
I know I do.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, so um, so this handbook is, is, is very helpful. And I actually didn't know about handbook when I was a county planner in Lincoln County. And after I came to D L C D, I found out about, about this book, and I really wish I knew about this, this handbook when I was a staff planner in Lincoln County because it's very, very helpful. So some responsibilities are to understand land use planning, um which um which I think anybody who is participating in in this process should have some understanding because I think that's a lot of, over the conflict comes from, people not understanding exactly what con, what the, the process is or what um land use planning is, and then there's, you know, and then that creates conflict. And I mean, but not, you can't expect everyone to know the same thing about land use planning. There's so many things to know too, so. Um, so just, um, so I will also do these type of um information sessions for any group in the community that's interested in. So if you have a group of folks that you feel like could benefit from this information, I'd be happy to schedule one of these with your folks because I think the more people are informed about this program, the, the more helpful it is for our communities. Um. So I would just, um, let's see. Some of the, I guess, important ones too is um the fourth one down, understand opportunities and limits of planning commission authority. Um, and the limits part is, is pretty critical, um because if you go outside of your limits, you may compromise um the record or the decision or something and, and kind of make a mess sort of um for the city. And they have to go and clean it up, uh which takes time away from their other things. Um, not, you know, so, so I just uh maybe just kind of, let you know, example of, of something like this is um um another small city, uh I think smaller than yours, um on the south coast. Uh, the planning commission thought that, they, or one member anyway, thought that they could go on Facebook and ask for people's opinions on upcoming um hearing for land use decision. And, and that's, that's a huge no. Um, they can come to the hearing and provide comments there, but don't be going out there and try to ask for opinions and comments, especially on such a, such a um easy-to-find social uh network. Uh, that's, that's um, that's grounds for appeal, easy, and that costs your city money. Um, okay, uh. Uh, maybe I'll see, am I, am I going too slow? Um, and then I just, maybe I just, I'm sorry, the last one, make, make decisions. That's, that's, that's your central thing that you do is make decisions. Uh, this is page sixteen of the Planning Commissioner Handbook. And it's not exhaustive, and I've again highlighted um the ability to make decisions. So make decisions is, is the thing that, that you do, and you must do it in a fair and partial way, in the way that you're not compromising the record, um in the way that, you know, there's no conflict interest, um there's no bias. Um, what was the third thing that, uh, I think that's the two. So um, so knowing how to make decision is, is very important. Okay, so I've mentioned the record a couple times now. Can someone tell me what is the record?
I'll try.
Yes, please.
I would assume it's the all the documents related to a proceeding, a case, particular case. The transcript or hearing, audio, video.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, all those, yes, yes. So it goes from, um, next slide, please. So the record can include, and it's not exhaustive, um includes uh the application materials, ground testimony, oral testimony, staff report, all the proceedings. staff report, all the proceedings, and your final order, and, and everything in between that has to do with the case itself. And so um to be on the record is everything that goes into decision needs to be on the record, because we need someone, say, in a year's time, five years' time, twenty years' time, to go back to that case file, open it up, and read everything, and like, oh, okay, I see how they made a decision now. That any reasonable person can pick that up and go, yep, I see the logical link from ordinance to um the facts and all these things, and I can see that on the record that this decision is made, and, and I can understand why it was made. So if you have, say, you know, things that was not on the record, somehow influenced your decision, and then it's made to um, you know, a certain way, and then somebody pick up the record and can't figure out how they made a decision, you know, that, that's um, I mean, not that you can necessarily appeal something uh twenty years later, um but um the good thing is to have um everything that goes into decision uh to be on the record, so that's what the record is. And so outside public hearing conversations um with planning commissioners is not on the record, and you don't want it to happen. And that's expertise, which we'll talk about it uh in a little bit. Okay, I kind of just, just said why we, why? So yeah, so just document the pro, the decision process, um, the record. Okay, so here's our type of, kinds of decisions. Um, I don't know exactly where um it called, it calls them type one, two, three, four. Um, so that's kind of what we go by, um but um type one, mysterious. Those are actually not lane use decisions, which means they cannot be appealed. They will be like your building permits, so if your neighbor wants to build addition to their house and bumps out his house closer to your house, you don't like it, you can't appeal it. He has his property rights, he met all the standards, he can have his addition. So that's a mysterious decision, nobody can appeal that. Another example is a floodplain development permit. If that neighbor's addition is inside a floodplain, he needs to have a floodplain development permit as a requirement for your community participating in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. And so that permit itself is also not appealable. And it's a staff decision. And then type two, type two and type three are what we call quasi judicial. Um, these are um decisions that are made by using the existing code and rules and policies, applying it to a specific property. So you're taking code that's in, in, in books now and applying to a, a proposal before you. You're not trying to change your code at the same time. So, um so the last one we call quasi judicial and can be made, that decision can be made either by staff or by a planning commission. When it's made by staff, we call it type two administrative. When it's by the planning commission, we call it type three. Um, so any type two decisions though, so a quasi, quasi judicial decision made by staff, such as a conditional use for maybe a bed and breakfast, um can be appealed to the planning commission. And then any planning commission decision can be appealed to the city council. And then if somehow that doesn't um do it for the folks, they can appeal it to Luba, Lynn Use Board of Appeals, um who has sort of final say, but most times they just remand to hand the decision back to the city or county and tell them to do it again, most times. And then type four is what's known as legislative, so that's where you recommend um one way or the other to the city council, and because they are the elected officials of the community, they have to be the ones to actually sign to ordinance. So that's why the legislative ones are um you recommend the city council makes a decision. Any questions on those? Um, so one, um I guess um in between decision is when you have a zone change for one property, because that's applying, that's one property, so you still have to um, um hear it, um but also see, the council has to also hear it. Um, I just want to point it out, because that was on my slide. So you're not confused why it's on my slide. Okay, um so quasi judicial decisions, um this is where goal one also comes in, goal one is our citizen, citizen involvement, but that is where we're saying that the, the public has a opportunity to be heard, um all parties, so if you're applicant, if you're opponents, or if you're just, you know, um general public, you can all come to the hearing and be heard. Uh, opportunity to present and rebut evidence, um and the right to an impartial tribunal, having no prehearing or expedited contact, according, um concerning the lane use action that issue, so um s- someone wants to talk to you, say in the grocery store, upcoming laser action, yeah, right, don't talk to them. Okay, um you also have a right to find the sort of fact and right to record of the proceedings, and it's on page nineteen of the um the handbook, the planing handbook, so um when, when you're bored, just maybe just go to the content and see which, you know, topic interests you, and just flip to that page, because it's, it's very digestible, um it's, it's a, it's a good handbook. Okay, um I've highlighted that the decision must be based on relevant evidence in the record to assure that all interested persons ha, and then also, uh so the reason um that we're limiting the basis for decision to be on the record, so that according to what I was saying, to assure that all interested persons have opportunity to review the evidence and to rebut it. Um, so has to be on record, if somebody, you know, talks to you um in the grocery store, and then nobody else hears it, then I can rebut that, that um opinion or, or claim. Uh, let's see, okay, and then I've just um have noted, relevant evidence is evidence that in the record that shows an approval criteria is or is not satisfied. Um, so that kind of um points to that sometimes when people are really passionate about something, changes in the neighborhood, they will come and testify and say, oh, this used to be where I walk my dog, or this is where deers were, or this and that, um. If you let this happen, then, you know, we lose all this, all these things, which is true. But it's um, it's not addressing a approval criterion that's in ordinance, so even though they're saying those things that are true, that shouldn't factor into your decision making, because your decision making is on the ordinances, the standards and the ordinances, and whether the fact presented meet or do not meet your ordinances. Okay, so um now finally we're into fair and partial tribunal. Um, so for quasi judicial, quasi judicial decisions, um it's more strict, and it's just to what, what you uh can or cannot do, um so expedited contact, um don't do those. Conflict interest, you have to disclose them, bias, you also disclose them, but bias is a really hard thing to prove in court, where somebody was biased or not apparently. Uh, which is a lot understandable. Uh, for legislative uh decisions, it's only conflict interest that you have to worry about, you don't have to worry about expedited contact, um or, or bias. Okay, so expedited contact just means um that you are, somebody's talking to you, decision maker outside of the hearing process. Um, and it only applies to the quasi judicial decisions, because you're applying existing ordinances to a specific property, you are not making new rules, which is legis, legislative. Um, and, and legislative also applies to, say, the entire zone, entire city, or entire, you know, land use or use types. So those are, we don't worry so much about expedited contact, because many people will be affected by those decisions by legislative. But for quasi judicial, only that property is gonna be affected, or in a neighboring, just by externalities, but um so that's why the expertise is, is important, because um people don't as decision makers, you don't want to be influenced by uh opinions or comments or claims outside of the record, against on the record. Um, site visits are expedited contact, and I know that for small cities, it's hard to not even drive by a place, you know, just, I just took my daily route to the grocery store, and then can I not just, you know, look over real quick? Um, you can. Um, but um, but if you really want to um understand, and you know, people, you know, have said, well, if I just go, go look at it, I will understand the, the proposal so much better. That may be true, and if you do want to look at it, ask staff to maybe go and take pictures of the property and then provide to everybody, because if you show up as a planning commission to a site for a site visit, then you have a call, you gotta do this noticing, all this other stuff. So um it's the easiest thing, if you want to actually, you know, visually see it, just to ask for some photos, so be the easiest way to get, to get around that. Um, a staff contact is not expedited contact, which means if it questions about um a case or something, always feel free to talk to um your staff planner, um they can answer your questions. Um, so the last bullet says that it does not necessarily lead to disqualification, but has appearance of bias. So what that means is that the chair typically, if you're in the hearing process, she, he will ask for, anybody have expedited contact for this case? And you all say no, but if you did say yes, you could disclose it and describe the expedited contact. And the reason that, so even though you're able to disclose and describe what that was about, and then therefore informing everybody of what that expedited contact was about, um the optics of that is still not good, um because I mean, we all know this, right? Any two people having a conversation who can walk away thinking that we've, we've understood different things from that one conversation. And um so my point is the conversation can be characterized differently by different people easily. And so if you don't have a recording and, you know, I don't know if I would go into that, but um the best thing is to not have expedited contact, because even on site visits, um we all see different things, which is by, you know, being different people, right? I'm, I'm, I'm a short person, I see different things than taller people do. Like, I don't see things on top shelf all the time, like, where's this thing? Like, oh, it's just, it's just up there, I, I didn't see it. So um, so just avoid it, um if you can, so being a small community, um you should have a little elevator speech type thing, maybe a sentence or two, to let your friend of course, don't know, your neighbor, like, don't talk to me right now, I'm coming to the hearing, and run away. Um, so again, so that we're all using the same information on the record, so no expedited contact. Okay, conflict of interest, um this has to do with money, and only has to do with money, so there are two types, actual and potential. Um, actual is when, so it's, it's when you make a decision, the actual conflict interest will for sure make you money or lose you money, either way, and the you is the legal you, so it's you, your spouse, your business partner, your kids, your grandkids, um your cousins, I don't know, the legal, I don't know, you have all of those. Okay, any of those things, so um, so if you make a decision to any of those legal use, will make money all those money, that's actual conflict interest, you must recuse yourself. Potential is, it might, but also might not. So my hypothetical example I like to use is, say you're the owner of a gravel company, and you're the only one in, say, five states or five county area. And so by making decision for this one quasi judicial application for a conscious use, say, I don't know, um, I don't know, some, some development that needs a lot of, a lot of gravel, a lot of road, road making. Um, that you know that if you vote yes on this, you will for sure get that job of making all that road, because you're the only gravel and driveway company in like two hundred mile radius. So you must recuse yourself in that case. If you are one of three, you're competitors in your, in, in the same area, that's a potential conflict interest. You might get a bid, but might, might also not get a bid. So in potential conflict interest, you can participate, but it's good to, but you need to disclose, and this is potential, it's not actual. Um, but actual, must recuse yourself, potential, um disclose the nature of the potential conflict interest. Any questions? Um, okay, so I just kind of went over, I just said, um so if actual, reformer participating. And the second bullet says unless the vote is needed for a quorum. Um, so this is where, if you don't have a planning commission that's fully seated, you can only have the quorum as seated, and then one person can participate, then, you know, you get into kind of a tricky situation. So this is not a reason why it's very important to have a planning commission fully seated. So, and again, thank you for serving on the commission. Um, and then potential, you just announce before uh decisions made. Um, here I just include, I just assumed that the, um, the PowerPoint be shared out, so I've just included the ORS that actually defines um the definition of actual conflict interest. I'm not gonna read it all, but I'm just highlighting is would be, so for sure it would for actual, and if you go to um the potential one, it's a could be. So would be, the actual, could be, the potential. So my, this doesn't require you to recuse yourself, um and again, it's a very hard thing to um to prove or even deem someone on, just because you know, when we were humans, we all kind of, you know, kind of evaluate a new situation by our past experiences, so it's hard to say it's a bias of what's just you trying to go about your daily life as a human, so um but typically a bias is where you um have made a decision that you're gonna vote one way, doesn't matter what the evidence is. But you just, nothing else sway you, you're not gonna be open minded, you're not gonna listen to each of both sides, you already made out your mind. So that is a bias, and, but as I said earlier, that is really hard to, to um to prove in court that somebody was biased, apparently. Okay, we can skip this one, thank you. Uh, this is the procedure, so chair opens the hearing, describes proceedings, and read the raise it or waive it statement. Does anyone know what the raise it or waive it statement is? Chair Starbuck, do you know what the raise it or waive it statement is?
Not sure.
Okay. Um, the raise it or waive statement is a statement that's read by the chair that lets everyone know, especially the public um participating, that you have an issue with the case before us. You must submit testimony before the record is closed. If you don't, if you didn't raise it, you have waived your right to appeal later. So if you don't raise it, you've waived it. That means all you're not interested, you can't appeal later, like, oh, wait a second, I am done like this part of it. You must raise it in the, in, on the record at the public hearing. You can also submit written testimony, um that will be, that was, hold your standing. But if you don't participate in the first hearing, you've waived your right to.
It needs to be in the record.
Needs to be on record, yeah. Um, okay, so that's super important, because if that, if that's not read, that's also an easy way for someone to appeal the whole whole hearing process, is that this wasn't read, procedural error, and then appeals can happen. Um, okay, so, okay, what we talked about, so then chair also asks for declaration of, of the expedite, our expedited contact bias and complete interest, and then followed by uh staff report, uh the findings, recommendation. Um, sometimes I kind of skipped over the announcement of criteria, sometimes um the staff does that, um it just depends on the jurisdiction. Okay, then testimony, applicant goes first, other proponents, opponents, and then people who are neutral, and then once they've said their piece, then applicant gets to rebut anything that was said um in the hearing. Um, there can be requests for continuance, and even record open, so continuance is where you're continuing a hearing. So you're saying we will reconvene at day certain, and then we'll hear more testimony or discuss this later. And that's usually, if you can avoid that, that's better, because you do have a time, a, a hundred, one hundred twenty day limit to finish the laser decision within your jurisdiction, so that means including all appeal. to finish the legal decision within your jurisdiction. So that means including all appeals. So you want to leave some room in case there's appeals because um, once application is submitted, the one hundred, one hundred twenty day um rule limit, um, make sure that the applicant gets a decision within that timeframe. That's another um, sort of fair process we built into our system so that no bureaucrat is sitting at their desk and then just putting aside, oh, I'll get to that later, and don't get to it in like six months. So they're required to um, go through all the process um, within the local jurisdiction in one hundred twenty days. So must leave room for appeals. Um, otherwise, um, if you don't meet that limit, then automatically the person's proposal um, can can be just green light um, by by law. And um, I don't think everybody knows that. And so I don't know how many people actually do that. If they do, um, somehow find themselves on the outside of the one hundred twenty day. Um, one jurisdiction in on the south coast, it's it's a county. And um, something they did was they made decision outside the one hundred twenty day limit. And they look back to try to, and there was some conflict with with that case or something. And then, and then we look into the files and realize, oh, they never cashed a check for the application fee. So typically cashing a check is what people use as the day one, a day one. So when you cash a check, then like application is active. So they didn't do right by not cashing a check. And they didn't do right by the day limit. But then they sort of save themselves legally by not cashing a check.
I put negative. Uh, point here on testimony. Um, we have probably, uh, I'm not sure that the way we're doing it now is we have the applicant give testimony, and then we have a mix of all other comments. And then the applicant has a final, final rebuttal or whatever. So there's there's these, the three middle points here are are all mixed together.
Okay, um, so typically I think we separate it out so that it's easier to keep track of who's for or for against. I mean, or which comments for, which comments against. Um, and I don't know if it necessarily is a legal requirement to separate it out. And I know for legislative, you don't have to.
Oh, sorry. There's no legal requirement so long as the applicant gets their final rebuttal.
So we're doing all right.
Um, okay, so um, so the previous slide, I mentioned that you don't want to continue hearing. You don't have to because of scheduling. And then cut eating more into your one hundred twenty day limit. Um, but if you leave the record open, it's more a more sure way to control your timeline and meet that limit. So you can leave the record open, but not have a hearing again. So people within, I won't go into details now, but you will have a chance to submit more written testimony um, within that timeframe. Um, the seven, seven, seven refers to number of days, these things are open, the windows. And the last seven days is for the applicant again to rebut anything that was said in in the previous fourteen. Um, see. Okay, and then you discuss, you make a motion, you vote, and after hearing, staff writes the findings, um, or whoever your order says to write findings, that gets done, and then chair assigns the 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 final order. Okay, so legislative, um, you had to make sure everyone has has the opportunity to participate. You don't need to separate out proponents and opponents, but we just learned, um, you don't need to anyway for the quasi judicial. Um, but also um, no concerns with expertise contact or bias. But the conflict interest concerns will still remain. So if you have actual conflict interest, you still need to recuse yourself. If it's a potential, then you just need to disclose. Another bone break. Um, any questions? Okay.
I have one, please. I'm I'm confused about when the one hundred and twenty day period begins.
Yeah.
They're absolute on that.
Yeah. Do you, am I going to the very last slide, please? Okay, so this is my little diagram of of that lifecycle of a quasi judicial um, decision. Um, so they, so um, in the box is the one hundred twenty day um, to complete the whole process at a local level. And so day one is when application is deemed complete. And so before that, when application is accepted, the local jurisdiction has thirty days to do what we call the completeness review. So there are thirty days to see if anything's missing. Maybe the applicant didn't address a few criterias that need to be addressed, and therefore we can't move on without that being there. Um, so then we'll typically write them a letter, a lot of incompleteness to request specific items that need need to also submit to for us to have the full information we need to make a decision. So when the applicant um receives a lot of incompleteness, they have three choices. The first choice is to provide all information that's asked for in that letter. Second one is provide some of that information, and then written statement saying they're not gonna give you anymore, or the city. And then the third is they're not gonna give you anymore. That's all they're gonna give you. So one is all all information you ask for, two is partial information, and then saying that's all they got, and there is no thanks. So by any of those three paths, then the applicant has secure what, they have made an application complete by procedural standards. So what that means when it's complete, even though you have the full information you need to make a decision, affirmative decision, they've earned their right to a hearing. And so then that's when you enter the one hundred twenty day. Once it's deemed complete, then the one hundred twenty day limit starts. And um, I believe recently they've um, uh, something happened recently, yes, in maybe the last five years. Um, that if in the thirty days, if it took you thirty days to to decide it was complete, and you didn't ask for anything. So on day three, so um, so so submitted Jeff the application for conscious use on day day one, and then takes Jeff thirty days to decide, okay, he's he he this application's got all all information I need. And then doesn't write a lot of incompleteness because nothing to be asked for. Then that thirty days, actually, then they take away from your one hundred twenty. So now you have only ninety days. So they count the thirty days that Jeff's wasted sitting on the application and and not looking at it right away. Uh, anyways, so so this is all to protect the the property owner, the applicants too, so that, you know, again, it's not just sitting on some desk and not getting moved forward. And I put this up, I made this um, diagram response to another small city on the south coast. Well, the uh, there was a hearing for this development that they couldn't figure out was a hotel motel or something else. Um, and then the um, public was very angry that the city planner let it go to hearing. They go, you don't have all information that you need to make decision. How can you let it go to hearing? They're very mad. Now understanding the process that if if applicant has earned the procedural completeness, then they have earned their right to a hearing, even if they don't have the full information for a planner or a plan commission to give a thumbs up on a proposal because they maybe they didn't address five standards. And they asked for it, and they didn't give any, or said they weren't gonna give any. So so that's why I include this because um, just that misunderstanding by the public created a lot of headache for a lot of people.
I have a question about this because this whole quasi judicial, then it turns into a legislative process. That's confusing me because now here you show the whole process as quasi judicial. But in the other slide, you showed the planning commission recommendation to the city council being a legis, the city council's decision is being legislative, and so therefore you don't have to worry about ex parte, blah, blah, blah. Is that in the statute?
No, um, so thank you, thank you. Um, so are you talking about the slide where I type one, two, three, four?
I'm talking about the one where you had, where you were talking about the city council, its legislative decision, and therefore you don't have to worry about bias or ex parte.
Right, right.
But here you're showing the whole process as a quasi judicial decision, which I would think it would remain the same type of decision through the whole process.
So legislative does not have this time limit. Would you like to?
So there's a, there's a big difference between a legislative decision and a quasi judicial decision.
I guess I'm just asking, what is it? On this slide, it shows the city council's decision as a quasi judicial decision.
Oh, because that's the appeal route. Um, so if an applicant does not like the staff decision, they can appeal it to depending upon whether it's a one, two, or three. The if the applicant does not like staff's decision, they can then appeal staff's decision to the planning commission. If they do not like the planning commission's decision, they can appeal it to the city council. And beyond city council, it goes to the land use board of appeals. But that's for a quasi judicial application of essentially an individual developer. That's.
Okay, so what was the legislative decision you were talking about earlier?
So a legislative decision is like when the the planning commission looks at a code provision.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. I thought we were talking about this whole process.
No.
Hearing, okay.
The one hundred twenty day rule applies to applications from developers.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't um, go through this entire diagram to kind of let you know my flow chart looks like or what that means. So so yeah, so staff review or um, as state attorney here said, um, if the staff, staff decisions repeal is to go to plan commission, and then that's appeal goes to state council. And so um, that's why my my large dashed arrows are the appeal directions. And then um, and and to appeal to, so city council's included here because they are the last step in the one hundred twenty day limit. So you need to leave room for their schedule. Um, if if it goes that far, and you never know. So you want to make sure you do everything before that that flow, you know, as quickly as you can so that there is room scheduling possibility. Because, you know, city council agendas get filled up too quickly, like early on, you know, like months ahead. So um, so you want to leave room for scheduling that appeal with the city council if you have to. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I think it was just the the other slide where you had quasi judicial, quasi judicial legislative. And on the legislative, you said something about um, planning commission recommendation. And when you were talking about quasi judicial, it made it look like you were talking about an individual proceeding versus. So anyway, I understand.
Okay, we're good.
We're good.
Okay. All right. So yeah, so this um, right, so this one's only applies to quasi judicial, and legislative decisions don't have a time limit, time limit like this. Um, could you go back to um, where we were? I don't remember exactly which one, but maybe we'll see and recognize it.
Right there.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you. Um, so I'll just um, maybe just in interest of time, just kind of read my highlights. Um, so the this, so the yellow one, the decision maker must apply the adopted criteria for approval that are contained zoning code. And application must be approved even if the decision maker disagrees with the criteria. And then the green is if the applicant fails to demonstrate compliance with the applicable criteria, decision maker must deny application, even if thinks um, believes that criteria are unreasonable. So essentially what that says is if it meets the code, the applicable code, you must approve. If it doesn't, you must deny. Next please. Okay. So just to drill a point home, it's all about a code. It meets a code. You approve it. If it does not meet a code, you don't approve it. Of course, some codes are discretionary, and then you have room to uh, wiggle room to decide. Um, but it's you have to be, has to be based on the code. So that neighbor that says I walk my dog on the empty lot, now it's not gonna be empty lot, or deer come and eat the blueberry or blacka, blackberries, and now they can't have that food source. Um, maybe true, but it's irrelevant. Next please. Uh, he's a little small um, now. Um, and maybe we don't have to do this. Um, I don't know. Do you guys want to? This is my little, a little example to practice whether you're supposed to approve this one or not. Uh, okay, so so Sarah is applicant wants to operate a hotel in a zoning district that does not allow hotels, but allows multifamily dwellings such as apartment house. The applicant applies for apartment house and submits a below floor plan. And then the boxes are defined for apartment house and hotel. And these are actual codes from an actual city on the south coast. So apartment house means a building or portion thereof designed, built, rented, leased, let or hired out to be occupied, or which is occupied, or is the home or residence of three or more families living independently of each other and doing their own cooking in the building, and shall include flats and apartments. Um, they obviously need to rework that language. It's very confusing. Um, then hotel means any building containing guest rooms which are rented or hired out to be occupied for sleeping purposes for guests, excluding any facility that meets the definition of bed and breakfast facility. And I didn't include what they said about breakfast facility. And I don't know if you can see the floor plan here. Um, but so if safe is a proposal before you, and they apply for apartment house, um, should you approve or deny this one?
Den- deny.
Deny.
And why is that?
The code.
They don't even have a microwave.
And it doesn't meet the code.
But yes, yeah, they have a microwave to like heat up water to make some noodles. Um, right. Yes, so no cooking facility. So they're still trying to, you know, kind of like sneak in a hotel, but um, under the guise of apartment house. Next please.
So the uh, so what you're saying here, or what this is saying, is that the hotels or or motels that you visit that have uh, little refrigerators and microwaves can be considered apartments?
No, that's not what I'm saying. All I'm saying is you should deny that as apartment house.
Because they weren't defining the hotels there.
Um, okay, so what are findings? Um, I like to compare findings to a recipe because um, the the facts provided by the applicants are kind of your, and and the standards are kind of your ingredients um, and your instructions. Or, okay, so maybe the facts are ingredients, and the standards are instructions, and then if the facts meet the standards, I don't know, maybe it's getting a little squishy now, my analogy. Um, but essentially it's findings where you can look at um, this recipe and 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 ingredients and instructions and and understand how the decision was made. Like, okay, I have banana in my banana bread, and I made bread that tastes like banana. Now I've, this recipe makes sense. If I had carrots and not banana in my banana bread recipe, that would not make sense. I don't know. Was that was that an okay analogy? Does that, is that, that work for anybody? Maybe. Um, um, so findings are basically um, a written, um, well, I suppose you will have it in a staff report, and then you also have it in your final order, um, when you have made your decision, you know, and the chair assigns the final order. Any questions? I think I have more on this, but any questions so far? Next please. Um, okay, so findings are, purposes are to help review the criteria and establish the facts and evidence that you used um, to make your decision on. And also explains how the conclusions are supported by substantial evidence. And I've underlined substantial evidence because that's a term that's used a lot in land use, substantial evidence. Um, and then the findings also demonstrate that decision was not arbitrary, and that you've reviewed your procedures and the the facts and the evidence, and then everything makes sense, and therefore you you've approved it. And therefore you, you've approved it or, or denied it. Oh, and that's it. Any questions? And then, um, I just have the link to the Oregon story or an Oregon story. Uh, which is basically goes through the history of Oregon land use and some of the things I talked about in my slides early on the history. I believe it also recounts that in, in this film.
And just to clarify, I was not checking the news. I was checking to see what. I was checking to see what, um, communities are in Lane County because I don't know that.
Oh, okay. Just so you know, I wasn't looking at you.
Well, I'm just saying, if it was me, I was, I promise you, I was now looking at the news.
I don't know what. Right?
Well, um, if no questions, um, I guess, I guess that's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, uh, planning director comments. I don't think we're supposed to call you planning director though. So that might have to be changed.
That, that is a perfect segue to, to what I have to say here. I, I will be brief, but I, I do have a few updates, um, starting with a department reorg. Uh, city manager, uh, Tori Contreras, uh, before I arrived, began the reorganization, which is bringing. Uh, a few, uh, what were historically separate divisions of the city into one department. So that brings. Uh, long range planning, short range planning. So most of what we've been talking about today is legislative and quasi judicial work is, is. Uh, going to fall directly under, uh, my department's responsibility, uh, expanding the responsibility to include. Uh, code enforcement, uh, of both, uh, uh, private property, but also the, the gore, the separate standalone enforcement related to Gorse as well. And, uh, I wanted to touch briefly on how we're going to approach that with staffing. Uh, as you know, uh, my predecessor, Dana, uh, now boardman, uh, uh. Through recent, uh, marriage, um, has, um, graciously offered to, uh, stay on in a consulting capacity. So we have, uh, her horsepower. Uh, and institutional memory on a lot of work and a lot of projects over the years. So she will be, uh, on call as needed. Uh, as you know, we do have the, uh, Lane County Council of Government, uh, employee Henry. Uh, Henry's name, thank you. Uh, he is also, uh, taken on a lot of the slack in, in, uh, the gap between Dana and myself. So. He'll be retained on an on-call basis for some of our type two projects. So the garden variety stuff, the smaller, um. Ministerial level stuff that you do not see, uh, the bigger stuff, the type threes and fours, uh, will be handled by myself and Dana. So you, you might see her. Friendly face again here in the near future. With that, I, I wanted to underscore the importance of fee recovery. We're looking at, um, our fee schedule, which as you may recall, was updated. Um, in the recent past during Dana's tenure. Um, and a part of that was recovering actual cost for projects. So. Uh, there's kind of a two-part fee, um, arrangement or, or format. Uh, one is the actual fee for the permit itself. So the paper. Uh, and the backstory behind the paper. Um, and then there's the recoverable part, which is, um, the staff time. Both in-house staff, but also consulting staff because we do send a lot of work, uh, primarily for. Uh, civil engineering out of house and that gets expensive quick. So for those projects, um, we do, um, and we do set up a process for recovering that fee. Um, that includes the time for the aforementioned consultants. So we're really underscoring the importance of ensuring that everything we do is recoverable. Moving forward for just fiscal austerity. So, um, with that in mind. Keep, keep that in mind as you see fewer staff members, but there's still the horsepower there to get the work done. Wanted to touch base, uh, on a few projects that you may have heard of that have probably sat, sat for a while prior to my arrival, but, um. I wanted to rest you assured that the work is foremost on my to-do list and thanks in large part to, uh, Shannon. Um, who's not in the seat anymore, but, um, she's helped me a great deal in getting up to speed and retaining a lot of. Uh, knowledge and, um, and hands-on, uh, as I get up to speed. Um, same with Dana. I was able to get a briefing from her and I just wanted to touch base on a few key, uh, projects. So these are. Um, projects that you will have heard of, um, wanted to give you an update on where we stand with them. First and foremost is the TSP, as you know, that goes to city council. On Tuesday, the second, uh, feel free to attend, um, and, um, uh, either in person or virtually. Uh, and encourage you to, um, not lose your voice in the process. Uh, we also have what was called the Urban Forum project, and that was a three-dimensional. Uh, depiction of our zoning code, which is online. Uh, I will circulate, uh, to you via email, a link to that. It's public for everyone. So community as well. Uh, can, can kind of go right, explore right into, uh, you know, block scale parcel by parcel. Uh, you can actually kick the map over on a three-dimensional axis and you can sort of begin to see the volume of zoning. So it turns a two-dimensional world into a three-dimensional one. Uh, they're still working out some kinks. Um, Shannon has been, uh, doing triple backflips to get them all the data they need. It's not, it's only as smart as the data you put into it. So we're still working on getting some of the kinks out, but it'll ultimately be a very user-friendly tool to understand development capacity, uh, on a parcel scale. Um, housing code audit, uh, is, as you know, an update, uh, funded, uh, through a grant with DLCD. We're getting a lot of, um. Uh, tangible information from the consultant, uh, who have spent the last six months undergoing an audit process to understand what in our. Municipal code complies with state law and what does not. Uh, their recommendations call, fall into categories which are loosely. Uh, must do code changes, uh, should do code changes and could do code changes. So. Uh, we'll be coming to you all, uh, here, um, in the near future, uh, with, um. Uh, a potentially a joint work session with, with you and, and council and then, uh, move into the adoption process. Um, I wanted to point out a very important community meeting on the subject, which is going to take place on October ninth. Uh, that information will go public, uh, tomorrow. Uh, well, take that back. It'll go public, uh, when I, when we return from. Uh, the holiday. So Tuesday, we'll be loading up a lot of the information to give folks, uh, an early. Uh, look at what that event looks like. Uh, the purpose essentially is for the consultants to convey. Uh, what they've discovered in the audit, um, and come up with what they're calling code concepts. Um, options for us to consider, uh, in, in those three broad categories, the, the must, um, the should and the could. Uh, changes to our code. So it's a very comprehensive look at our municipal code, uh, as it is. Uh, aligned with comprehensive plan, a policy, um, and state planning goals, which you are all now experts on. And what we need to do to induce housing. And that's the primary thrust of the initiative. Next on the list is architectural review update. We had a rare, our capital R, A, R E, um, member here who did a lot of work with. Delving into our architectural review standards primarily, uh, related to clear and objective standards, uh, for housing, uh, review. So that's. Produced a, a topic and subject matter, which is, um, going to be, uh, one that you're going to roll your sleeves up on here in the near term. I would expect that to come your way, um, in probably November or December. So that's about the time I'll have to produce it in a. A cogent manner that you guys can dig into. So stand by on that. Beaches and Dunes ordinance update, um, and comp plan update, uh, that is also a DLCD grant. Uh, the draft documents are, uh, by our agreement with the grant to be ready by the end of September. So that means those documents will be teed up. For your, uh, a recommendation to move forward to council. Uh, that also will go to, go in a public, uh, fashion here, posted on website and distributed to all those. Uh, who will be affected by, uh, new overlay for beaches and dunes. Goal twelve.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, darn. Still learning my goals. Uh, it's been a while. Um, and, uh, City Park Master Plan is next on the list. Um. We will have, uh, our, our consulting firm, um, which is DLA Landscape Architects. I believe they've had a little bit of outreach work here. They're producing a concept plan. We want to reengage with the group that was, uh, set up to. Help navigate that process, uh, and I've had a little bit of outreach and, and one-on-ones with some of those folks. So. Um, I would hope that that information comes from the consultant here in the next, uh. Week or two. And so we'll see more substance on what, what they're calling their early concept plan for the, for the new park, the new City Park Master Plan. Uh, Seabird Drive, we had a, we had a open house event, uh, yesterday afternoon, uh, out on Seabird. Drive, uh, was well attended, roughly fifty folks, uh, that, um, produced input from. Uh, across the board on mostly near-term improvements to Seabird Drive to calm that traffic. So we're talking. Uh, speed bumps and signage, uh, painted solutions and, um, and asphalt solutions, um. As separate and distinct from right-of-way acquisition improvements. So there's a big cost difference. Uh, we have a little bit of funding, uh, to get some of those initiatives in the ground first. And the underscored. Message, uh, from the consultant during the presentation was that many small improvements, uh, not single. Um, limited or larger improvements, uh, with this kind of revenue will help, um, reinforce. Or create a condition where we'll calm traffic, uh, while also maintaining, maintaining its role as a primary collector. Uh, for an existing and, and growing part of our community. Uh, so. Uh, those inputs from last night or yesterday afternoon will be consolidated. By the consultant and we expect those to be returned to us here in the near term, next month or so. And, uh, we'll, we'll turn those around for your. Your consideration and review as well. That's a quick summary of, of what I've got on my plate, what, what I've reviewed. Uh, I'm happy to dig into any of those in detail as time permits this evening, um, but, but certainly expect that over the next. Uh, quarter or so, you'll, you'll see a lot more from me on, on all those items. Questions?
I have a question, Jeff, please. Um, who's in, who's in charge now of code enforcement of commercial property?
Uh, that's my responsibility. Uh, Richard, uh, is still taking the point on that. Um. Uh, I, I will mention that Jason Crawl, uh, who's primarily been assigned to, uh, the Gorse enforcement. He, he's also got in his contract. Ten to twenty-five percent of his time dedicated to planning. Uh, we're, we're discussing. Uh, options for him to sort of add horsepower to that effort. Um, I do want to say that our commercial code enforcement. Um, uh, and I forgot to mention that added to my plate, um, under community, uh, development was, was economic development. So it is part of. Uh, my background and, and my history, both from the, the private and, and public sectors. So. Um, we, we are going to be taking a very proactive approach to code enforcement in the commercial sector. Uh, meaning we're going to be doing outreach to folks, um, business owners, merchants, um, to induce. Um, a collaborative, uh, resolution to some of what we consider to be blighted properties. Um, leading the way are, uh, uh, some very dear structures, uh, in Old Town without getting specific. Um, enforcement is underway. Um, and will continue to be, uh, underway in a collaborative fashion. As, as opposed to more reactionary, um, enforcement for residential work. We, we aren't going to be going out and. Uh, asking folks to, um, uh, uh, cut grass if it's over, uh, sixteen inches tall, for example, but we will be responding, uh, to that. We just don't have the resource in-house to be. Proactive on, on the residential side. Um, Gorse is different. We're still understanding a little bit more how that can be both voluntary and mandatory at the same time. Um, and, uh, we want to implore and, and, you know, convince folks that it's. Uh, ought to be a priority for them to initiate, uh, the request for the city to help them, uh, contend with what is a very. Um, a, a very critical item for us, which is abating Gorse. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Were you going to comment on the planning commission application?
Yeah, that's next. Um, so we have, um, I, I just want to touch to on two, two development services projects which. Have already come through. They're not active cases. So I, I can touch on them briefly for you, but, um, we do have, uh, as you know, gravel point, um, is now in what we're calling zoning compliance. Uh, so your, your, your entitlement that you, you issued is now under review for, uh, compliance as it moves into, uh, construction documents or building permits. So. We're reviewing that. Um, as for planning commission outlaw, uh, applications, we've got three of them. Um, uh, June indicated today that those, uh, would be, um. Passed on to council and we would expect, uh, them to, to entertain those, those applications, uh, at council, uh, uh, in, uh, October. And that concludes my report. So if you've got any questions for me, I'm happy to, to answer.
None. All right, move on. Commissioners' comments?
Wait, I think we, excuse me, Don, I think we were going to hear about the opening on the planning commission. Is that part of?
That was, that was the, uh, planning commission applications.
Okay. Oh, okay. There's, how many applications have there been? It's been open for quite a while.
Oh, yeah.
Those are the three going to the city.
Just, just three, just a, yeah.
And you're going to recommend one of the three?
No, uh, those, all, all three are considered by the mayor and, and voted on by council.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Let's start with you on comments then.
Okay, well, at this end, um. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
And thank you, band and team tonight. And thank you very much for the presentation. I also saw it in Kuz Bay. A long time ago, it seemed like. So it was a great refresher. Thank you. Uh, thank you for. Our one, our, our one, uh, participant tonight and the folks on Zoom also. I'm going to thank them too. And I just would, um, as we move forward on projects, Jeff, uh, you probably noticed on the. Uh, comments, uh, commissioner comments on our last meeting, there were, uh, there was a. A, a suggestion that I had that the city council consider that the planning commission look into requirement of sidewalks for new construction. Not for existing. So I'd like to see if the city council would, uh, consider that. And then also I think it might have tied in with one of the things you said, um, development fees. Uh, I think that was, that's an important, I don't know if that falls under the, um. Jurisdiction or the purview of the planning commission, but I think it's important to revisit those, even though they were looked at. By the former city manager, my understanding is, uh, a number of years ago. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Presley?
I cannot add to those comments. Thank you.
Hey. Commissioner Jukowski?
Just wanted to say that maybe my observation skills were better or somebody put more signs up by the school. I just appreciate that there are more. Um, warnings for people to be cognizant of children.
Commissioner Roche?
I want to thank Wei for another good presentation. And I do have one thing on what you, what you said, Bill. Isn't our sidewalk requirements part of the TSP that's going to be considered?
I, I don't believe so. I talked to Dana about that.
She said something at, at the meeting yes, yesterday.
I don't, I don't recall that it is part of the TSP that, that I looked at. I might be wrong.
Yeah, well, I may be wrong too. But I know it came up yesterday and I know some people talked about it, but I.
Yeah, my understanding is that I don't have a, 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 a recollection of the exact, the, the all, all seventy-two projects, but I do know that there are pedestrian. Uh, crossings and safety, uh, improvements as a part of those, those projects.
Well, this would be, this would be different, wouldn't it?
I think there were some diagrams showing. That, that you had to have the sidewalks on the new development.
Oh, I, I'll, I'll double check. Thank you. I might have missed that.
Now I'll go look at it. A hundred and forty pages.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Okay, I have none. So I'm going to declare this session of the planning commission closed at. Eight forty-eight.
Oh, good.
Oh, good. Yeah. You have to drive to Langley's.
Right.